Already in your presence, we ask that you be with this may be with our mayor, be with us as counsel. Bring us on one accord. We rebuke confusion in the name of Jesus and we know that God, if you will step in it, it will be well. We give you all of the glory. Keep this great city, oh God, and all of the people that live in it, oh God. Make provision for us in every way. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My councilman, the motion on the works session minutes for January seventeenth?
Mr. President, move for adoption.
The most adopted, all favor raise your hands.
Eight with one abstention.
Okay, I need a motion on the record. Councilman, the minutes for the seventeenth of January?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
The most adopted, all favor raise your hands.
Eight with one abstention.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, yeah?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna try to adjust my message, so bear with me a little bit. I'm gonna table some of this until the next meeting, what I can. So I'm kinda doing this on the fly, so we can try to make up a little bit of time. Uh, we'll start though with the finance update. I know that's very important, but I will again be very, very brief in that. If we need any explanations, I don't mind going into it, but I will try to condense all of this down today. Um, City Montgomery first received kudos, uh, has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Financial Excellence by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The City of Montgomery received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA, as it's known, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States, uh, and Canada for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year 2022. The city's thirty-fourth consecutive year to be recognized by the GFOA, so I wanna give kudos to uh, Finance Director Betty Beville and her team, and to speak to their diligence and their dedication to their profession. This recognition also reflects upon our principles of transparency, accountability, good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. So I wanted to start off with, uh, some good news, and now we'll get to the, uh, finance update itself. Alright. Today I have four slides that reflect how revenue is trending in the city for sales and use tax, uh, lodging tax, gasoline and alcoholic, uh, beverage tax. Revenue from sales and use taxes increased for the month of January nearly eight percent over the same period in fiscal year 2022. And in terms of dollars, this equates to nearly a one million dollar increase, which is great. Sales and use tax revenue is still reflecting positive growth year over year. Overall, sales and use tax revenue also has a positive growth rate of nearly eight percent. Next slide. Lodging tax revenue rallied back to double digits in January. There was an increase of more than seventeen percent compared to the previous month. In comparison to the same period at FY 2022, lodging tax revenue had a positive growth rate of nearly twenty-five percent. Year over year, lodging tax revenue is nearly twenty-eight percent more than the previous fiscal year. That is significant because it's not just, uh, conservative budget. That is the amount of growth and the demand that we're seeing. Considering the expected growth in tourism this year, we only anticipate that lodging tax revenue will continue to have a positive growth rate in our city. And that's great for our general fund and it's great for our residents. It's great for our businesses and those that are in the service and hospitality industries. Next slide. Gasoline tax revenue rebounded from having a negative growth rate in December to having a slightly positive growth rate in January. Year over year, gasoline tax revenue has a positive growth rate of nearly three percent. Immediately following the winter holidays, travel often declines. Additionally, the cost of gas being more costly than it was a year ago may also be a factor for revenue being down in this category. As the weather gets warmer, I anticipate that this revenue stream will reflect some improvement. Final slide. The alcoholic beverage tax revenue has a significant positive growth rate of nearly sixty percent compared to the same period in the previous year. Growth rate is skewed skewed for a few reasons. First, there were a few taxpayers who were delinquent in paying their alcohol taxes, who remitted those payments in January. Second, a new business, or maybe a new business owner remitted a rather large sum of taxes for the first time. Finally, there were a few businesses that reflected increases in their alcohol tax remittances compared to previous months. Overall, year over year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue has a positive growth rate of nearly nine percent. Now, the council can expect to see end of year projections, uh, by the second meeting in March, and so we'll keep you abreast of any information that comes up between that time, and should you have any questions about any trends or need any additional information to share, uh, with the residents of your district, please don't hesitate to let us know. Now I'll try to move on very, very quickly, just through some announcements, and again, I'm gonna table some of this until some of these things that I plan to share with you until the next meeting. But, uh, there will be a drive-in film festival at Blount Cultural Park, uh, on February the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this experience will include car prizes, food trucks, and a double feature, uh, with The Princess and the Frog and Black Panther Wakanda forever. It's a free event from Cultural Affairs and it's part of an effort to increase community gatherings and family-friendly events in more accessible venues. Now we wanna move to the Rosa Parks Birthday Card Contest. Tonight, we're recognizing the winners of our new annual tradition, the Rosa Parks Birthday Card Contest. Students from across Montgomery participated in this contest that asked students to create a birthday card for Mrs. Parks with a message they would share as she were alive today. At this time, I'll ask Griff Waller to come and provide a little bit of overview as we present the check to ask, uh, these students to pose for a picture with the city council.
Thank you. Um, we have two first place winners, um, one of whom is with us tonight, the other had something come up. But, um, can Aaron O., who was in our K through six category, come up and receive your check for one hundred dollars from Mayor Stephen Reed? And if we can, Adore is gonna take a quick picture with you in the city council, since you're our, our first place winner who's here tonight. And, uh, Mayor, we have, uh, three more winners. Um, I just wanna make sure that, um, Joan Matthew, our winner from seventh through twelfth grade category, is not here. I do not think she could be here tonight, so we'll move on. Um, we'll now recognize our second and third place winners in this contest, uh, each of whom will receive a ride on the Rosa Parks Bus and free tickets and a private tour to Troy University's Rosa Parks Museum. Those winners are Aubrey Rose Hudson, who, uh, won second place in our K through six category. Raven Hester, who won second place in our seventh through twelfth grade category. And Zania Williams, who won third place in our seventh through twelfth grade category. And, and, and if y'all can, if, if Raven or Zania, if, if you're with us tonight, you can come up here to get a picture and to get your tickets. Um, it should be... This is Zania's, and then this is Raven's too. And yeah, Raven is Zania. If y'all step up and, and, and get your certificates.
Congratulations, ladies.
We wanna congratulate, uh, our students once again for their great work and certainly for participating in, uh, this contest. And, but more importantly, just for showing the, the interest and the effort. Again, often when we, we hear things about the, the students, it's not always positive. There are a lot of students doing positive things in our schools, uh, throughout our community, our public schools, our independent schools, our charter schools. So we thank them and their parents, as well as, uh, their teachers for encouraging them to get this type of experience and exposure. Uh, now I'm going to, uh, skip over one last issue, but I do want to, um, highlight a resolution. And I wanna ask Judge Johnny Harwick to please come up at this time as we present a, uh, resolution recognizing National Chairman of a Hundred Black Men, Thomas W. Dorch Jr. If we have any members of the Hundred Black Men, uh, please come up at this time. George Harwick is leader of our local chapter here, and I will ask him to, uh, make any comments, uh, that he wishes to share after we, um, read part of this resolution. Whereas Thomas W. Dorch Jr., author, entrepreneur, and community activist, is the longest-serving National Chairman of a Hundred Black Men of America Incorporated, a national organization committed to mentoring minority youth while enhancing educational and economic opportunities. And whereas among his many accomplishments, Chairman Dorch became the first African American to serve as state director while working with United States Senator Sam Nun of Georgia in the capacity of chief administrator. And whereas Chairman Thomas W. George Jr. is an inductee of the International Civil Rights Walk of Fame, a historic promenade established to honor and recognize national and global civil rights activists. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the City of Montgomery, Alabama, that the City of Montgomery does hereby express its sincere and profound gratitude to Thomas W. George Jr. in appreciation of his lifelong contributions to the advancement of equality for African Americans and the impressive example he sets for our youth. So during this Black History Month, on February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, we want to recognize Thomas W. Dorch Jr. and recognize this day as Tommy W. Dutch Jr. Day, calling upon the people of Montgomery to join their fellow citizens across this country in recognizing and participating in this special observance. So with that, uh, Judge Harwick, I would like for you to present any comments that you will on behalf of the Hundred Black Men, our mission, and what we do in the leadership of Chairman Dorch.
Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, ladies and gentlemen, you honor us today by honoring our chairman, who has dedicated his life to serving the youth of America. And he's reached out internationally. We have chapters around the globe. I know Chairman Dorch personally, he's a man of immense character, dedication, and service. And I'm so proud to serve with him in this organization. I'm proud to serve with these brothers and other brothers, uh, in this organization. We dedicate our lives to trying to help the young folks, uh, in our communities. Our main mission is to mentor young people, uh, to teach them entrepreneurial skills, to, uh, give them visions of economic empowerment, uh, skills for leadership development. So I am so honored and on behalf of Chairman Dorch, I accept this, uh, resolution and I say to you, Mayor, that I would personally deliver it, uh, to him, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you so much.
I think we need to pass this resolution. What we just, what's just been done here, it doesn't have...
Yes, it's a resolution that y'all need to adopt.
We're gonna make that, we're gonna make that, I need a motion to suspend the rules. Everybody got one? I think everybody got one. We got one. Yeah, I need to suspend, need a motion to suspend rules.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous?
President move to adopt.
Most to adopt, all favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Alright, off and running. Alright, let's get into it. I have number one.
Item one, ordinance rezoning thirty-nine Madison...
I guess he's done. Mayor, you through?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
We were moving on. Okay, item number one.
Ordinance rezoning thirty-nine Madison Avenue and thirty-eight East Jefferson Street from a T five to a T four zero.
Ms. Johnson, this is your district. You wanna make a, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, most to deny. All favor raise your hand. All opposed, same sign?
That's four.
All opposed, same sign?
I'm missing one vote.
What's that, ma'am?
Put, put your hands back up again. One, four. Vote, the ones that are voting no to deny it.
Only, only favor that now.
I'm missing one person.
Wait, which vote is this? Can we start off?
This is a motion to deny. This is a motion to deny. I have three, five, six, and eight that voted to deny it. I have one, four, nine, and seven, so I'm, I'm letting Mr. Lyons, I'm missing your vote.
He, he's...
Your, to not, to deny it?
No. No.
No to deny it. Okay, so it fails, it fails four to five, which leaves the presumption that there's a positive motion.
That's what you, and you voted to deny her motion?
Right.
Okay. Alright. That motion didn't carry, so...
If, if y'all need to hear the count, the, the motion was denied. The yes votes to deny it were three, five, six, and eight. The noes to deny were one, two, four, seven, and nine. So that's four to five. The, the motion fails, so there's a presumption of a positive motion.
I need a positive motion to go...
Or it can die for lack of motion.
Or it denies for lack of motion.
And it, it dies, it goes back to the planning commission?
It just dies.
Okay.
They would have to reapply.
It, it, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and...
Oh, it dies for lack of...
Yeah, let it die.
Like I'm doing.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I thought we had this worked out.
Mr. Brooke?
Sir, I, I'm not in charge.
I'm not the president, but, uh, uh, let me, let me help him a little bit on this one. Uh, we, we thought we had it worked out as late as three o'clock today, uh, to, uh, purchase the, the property until we were given a set of, um, I don't wanna say that. We were given a, a set of asks that we cannot close in one hour's time, uh, in particular for a amount that the city would be required to do in that amount of time. Um, I, I do feel like that if, if Missensco is, is operating in good faith, that, that we should be able to complete, uh, this purchase, but it, it's not something that I could stand behind before this council or before, uh, this body, this community, um, with what was presented at, at the ninth hour. And so that's where we are, and so I, I, I believe that we can still close it out, but we couldn't get it done by four o'clock today, uh, with some of the demands that were made at three o'clock.
Okay.
But we are working through the process and we're bringing on, we've asked not only our city attorney, but real estate attorneys to make sure that we have the proper, uh, contractual language in it for purchase of this site. We, we intend to move forward with that.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, Miss, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, will you finish?
I am, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna ask Ms. Blaylock, so it died with us, but the planning commission approved it. I mean, so does it just go away?
They will have to reapply with the planning commission. They will have to start the process all over.
All the way over, okay, okay. I just didn't know what that meant for him, and I didn't know if he knew what that meant.
Is that not correct?
I don't know.
If, if we cannot, and let me ask this question, if we cannot get this deal done, can somebody from the prevailing side can bring it up at next council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
But it has to be the next council meeting. It can't be the one in February, or March, or April, or whatever.
Item two, resolution revoking... Resolution revoking the business license of Newman Bar and Grill, thirteen forty-three Dalrayda Road. This is a review.
Uh, they, I, I spoke to the owners and the, and, uh, neighborhood association. They're doing basically everything we've asked them to do. We just wanna roll it over for another thirty-day review and carry this thing over, but right now, we're not gonna revoke their license. Just, let's carry it over.
Carry it over?
Thirty days.
Yeah, he, he's in the process of making an application, do the star watch and all that. And I've had some good positive feedback from the community about him, so more time.
It will come back up the first meeting in March.
Okay, number three.
Resolution authorizing the city to participate in the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program.
Motion to approve?
Ms. Johnson? It's old business, we've already hit it. Let's see what we got on here. I have the number three. Anne Mitchell?
Yes, hello.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Anne Mitchell, and I am here to oppose resolution number three, and here is why. The city council should not endorse a corporation that misleads citizens of Montgomery into believing that all of their water and sewer line repairs will be taken care of if they sign this contract with this for-profit corporation known as HomeServe USA. Currently, the city covers water and sewer line repairs up to the property line. From the property line to the house, the homeowner is responsible. Resolution number three suggests that the homeowner, suggests that the city endorses Home Serve USA to provide a service that can be counted on by the homeowner for water and sewer line repairs from the curb to the home. But in reality, this resolution is misleading to the public in a number of ways. First, it implies Home Serve USA is a city program because promotional mailings will contain the city logo and the Montgomery Water Works and sanitation, sanitary sewer logo. Second, the homeowner will be given the false belief that buying this plan, which is endorsed by the city, ensures oversight by the city. If this resolution were to pass, hundreds of thousands of dollars would be paid to the city as a sign-on bonus, and hundreds of thousands of dollars more are given based on the number of homeowners signed, who sign up for a Home Serve USA warranty. And homeowners will continue to receive promotional mailings with city logos. I have researched Home Serve USA. For example, U.S. News and World Report News 2023 indicates Home Serve it, Home Serve USA is not even in the top, uh, ten home warranty service programs. As a citizen of Montgomery, I and other citizens from various districts of our city believe this home warranty service plan is harmful. Home Serve USA uses creative and deceptive means to deny their customers' claims. Although Home Serve USA contractors do not resolve the problem, the homeowner is expected to continue paying monthly fees or be reported to the credit bureaus. And if a contractor causes damage to the property, Home Serve USA states it isn't responsible for any negligence by the service providers it sends. And if that wasn't enough hardship, the homeowner is charged a service fee by each contractor who simply shows up but does not repair the problem. The Better Business Bureau reports Home Serve USA has hundreds of complaints about missed appointments, inept contractors, contractors that damaged the property, cheap part replacements, shoddy work, and harassment, harassment by representatives. There are many documented experiences by homeowners throughout our country who were misled and mistreated by Home Serve USA and their contractors. United Policy Holders, a consumer watchdog group, Executive Director Amy Bock says consumers should pay close attention to the unusual circumstances, exception in the contract that really narrows the circumstances under which they would pay. Negligence of you or others, that's a pretty giant inclusion, and so is natural disaster. Many times, the exterior water service line is already covered by their homeowner's insurance, allowing Home Serve to use the city logo or a city water logo or a public utility logo, logo is deceptive. Home Serve repair plan also does not cover any damages necessary to reasonably access the repair area. Even though the warranty company selects the technicians, they are not responsible for the negligence or other conduct of the workers they dispatch. Better Business Bureau has seven hundred and thirty complaints about Home Serve USA water and sewer line protection in three years. Instead of providing savings, Home Serve USA costs homeowners more than if they had hired a local contractor. Consumers Checkbook reports that charges for the first year of coverage are from four hundred dollars to a thousand dollars and go up each year. Home Serve USA is not an insurance company, it is a warranty company. Therefore, they are not regulated nor required to report their claim performance. In other words, there is no governing body overseeing the business activities of Home Serve. Douglas Heller, an insurance agent, ex, uh, insurance expert with the Consumer Federation of America, noted that these deals are so clearly problematic that even those cities willing to take them require some veneer of justification that it is a public benefit. The fact that so much of the money paid to warranty gets spread around to their utility partners suggests they don't expect to pay out much in claims. And Heller also pointed out, when government collects money from its residents, it's a tax, a fee, or a fine. And having the tax laundered through a warranty company doesn't make it any less of a tax. Taxation should be done honestly and transparently.
Thank you for your information.
I, I have a couple of more things that I'd like to share.
Three minutes.
Okay. The most recent judgment against Home Serve USA was January sixth, twenty twenty-three, by State of Kansas, which Home Serve was ordered to pay eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Surely, this isn't what the city council wants for the citizens of Montgomery. For these numerous reasons and concerns about Home Serve USA, I would ask that the city council not pass resolution number three. Thank you. May I submit these references for your review?
Please.
Thank you.
Um, since she came up, um, I, I don't, I didn't see her at Home Serve here in, um, Work Session. Brian, come back up here. Uh, ma'am, do you have a warranty on your home that, so your insurance will cover?
Quite, uh, getting to the point of this, um, what, what my concern is.
I asked a question, so you can afford to pay it out of your pocket?
No, I cannot afford to pay it out of pocket. This is, this isn't, this is something that should be done through your insurance. A warranty program is not an insurance program. And they do not pay the claims that are made. In fact, they look for probably...
So I, I know we're short on time, so it's running, so my question is, have you had to repair your line yet?
No, and lines do not need to be repaired, except every maybe... No, and lines do not need to be repaired except every maybe eighty years.
That is not correct, ma'am. I've just did this myself two years ago, and I was able to come out of the pocket, but it's middle residents that live in Montgomery that don't have new-built homes that cannot afford this. So that low income portion.
Well, they don't cover, they don't cover expensive repairs.
Do you work for this company?
Pardon?
Do you work for Home Serve?
No, I do not work for Home Serve.
Do you work for opposing agency?
Pardon?
Do you work for an opposing agency?
No, but I was a realtor in the state of Illinois and North Carolina.
So you had Home Serve before?
Mr. President.
Excuse me. I do not work for Home Serve, nor do I own or have ever owned a plan with Home Serve because they are such an awful company.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
They have been sued by Kentucky, Massachusetts.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
That's enough. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good program. The only part that concerns me is our logo being used on some of this stuff.
That's your liability.
That's one of my issues. I think it's a great program.
Liability.
You know, that people can afford, but can you do this program without our logo on it?
Anybody got any questions?
I got a question.
I have a question. Can he do this program without our logo on it?
No.
The program does not work well without the logo because no one will open the letter to see the offering.
And he wasn't here when you talked about the, as far as the insurance, when Mr. Genright asked about the coverage as far as if there was a suit or anything like that.
Councilmember Johnson, I'll just say, it has been my experience, and again, we are fifteen years in partnership with the National League of Cities. If we were not a good company, they would have cut us years ago. We do not have large cities that drop out of our program. We have thirteen hundred cities. We have, we can go to, I was in Phoenix this week, or I was in Phoenix last week, and we literally presented them with ten-year decade of excellence because they've been in our program ten years, and they want to roll it out to every homeowner and help have ARPA funds to pay for it because it's such a good city or such a good program. The only time that I see things that just happen, and I, it's when someone has said, we're a local plumber that may not get picked, and we want you to kill it, and I'm just being as transparent as possible because with our program, if we go to someone's home and their line is, maybe there's some root intrusion, it's a three hundred dollar auger, well, a lot of plumbers will want to replace the line for six thousand dollars, and that's what our program stops. So when I run into that type of reaction, it's typically something like that, and I'm not saying that that was what it was. I'm just telling you that's what I have seen.
But we will be working with local plumbers from this program.
Absolutely, as long as they're licensed.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and go.
Mr. President, Brian, now, I heard we said, but just let the people know, this is the opt-in program. This is not mandatory program. You don't have to be a part of it if you don't want to be a part of it, right?
No, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and.
I got just a couple of questions. Does this warranty, does it apply? So basically, it'll patch only what needs to be patched, not replace the entire line.
Councilmember Lyons, we absolutely replace the line if it needs to be replaced.
If it needs to be replaced.
Yes. If it's a, if it's a water line where root has intruded that line or a sewer line where root has got in there, and we can blow that line out and not have to dig up that homeowner's yard and restore service, then we'll do that. But if the line is bottomed out and we cannot fix it, we will have our plumber replace the entire line, and we'll pay up to eighty-five hundred dollars to do that.
So you don't sewer and water line?
Sewer and water, and we have, our records show that we have a ninety-nine point seven percent claims acceptance rate, which means we've only denied point three percent of our claims. We're A-plus with the Better Business Bureau, and the times that we do deny claims is because it's a sprinkler system, and we don't cover branch lines. We cover that lateral water and that lateral sewer line.
Right, right. And so there's no language in there about depreciation of the line or whatever. I had experience with a home warranty I bought when I bought a house, and you walk out thinking, well, my air condition's covered, my AC's, everything's covered, but if it's five years or older, they consider it to be fully depreciated.
We have no pre-existing conditions whatsoever. Thank you so much.
Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have motion adopted. If I raise your hand.
Seven.
On opposed, same thing.
Two. Resolution carries.
Okay, good deal. Next item. All right, number four.
Item four, resolution setting the dates for the twenty twenty-three mayor and council elections.
All right. All right, we need a motion to, need a motion to suspend rules on number four.
Just adopt.
No, I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Number five, we carried over.
We need to delay that one until after number ten.
That's going to number six.
Item six, resolution approving phase three of the Montgomery Thrive Investment Initiative.
Motion to adopt.
Have motion adopted. If I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item seven, application for retail beer and retail table wine license doing businesses Lions Pride at thirty-eight ninety-four South Court Street.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, you're ready, okay. Motion to adopt. If I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item eight, the EJI vote launch ramp.
Okay, anybody, any questions on that, the motion to suspend the roof?
Motion to suspend the roof?
There's not a document in front of you. You will just uphold it. There's not a resolution.
Oh, is it? Is it to uphold?
Motion to oppose.
If I raise your hand, okay.
Unanimous. Item nine, review of Bama Auto Parts at forty-one nineteen Mobile Highway.
Carry it over. Okay, number ten.
Mrs. Graham, did you have anything that you wanted to discuss with him because you had other issues?
Is he here? Yeah, come on up here. How you doing? Mr. Akuba, how you doing? You're good. I know that licensing has asked that we carry this over because, you know, it's the first of the year, so you're working on that part of it, but I really had the concern about the cars that's in the right of way. All those cars that just park, those buses, the amount of people who call and just complain and just say whether they're coming out of the business right next to you, they can't really see as they pull out. Is there no way that you can move those vehicles to the backside of your property somewhere? Because, I mean, they're right on, if there was a sidewalk, they would be on the sidewalk. Literally, there's hardly no room in between the street and where the cars are parked on the side of your property. And it looks bad, one, and then, two, I just, I really do think it's a safety issue. Can you not relocate those cars?
I'll ask for about two, three days I have all that moved.
Okay.
So that's the issue.
Okay, okay. Well, you come back in two weeks unless, I just want to see, you know, people to be able to pull out without having to guess whether or not it's clear because the cars are right there, because we definitely don't want any accidents to occur, to occur right there by your business. Outside of that, I don't, I don't have an issue. We'll carry it over two weeks, make sure everything is good.
You say I come back in two weeks?
Yes, sir. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number.
Number ten, ordinance amending ordinance number one, twenty twenty-three, and appendices A and B to five A Catholic Social Services, forty-four fifty-five, Nerrane Road.
Okay. A motion to suspend rules on number ten.
Mr. President, will you suspend the rules?
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Now, I need a motion on number five.
Yes, and now we need to go back to resolution designating both places, and we'll make the amendment of five A.
Need a motion to adopt number five.
Motion to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
With amendment.
With amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Is it good enough?
Leave hands.
Unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Number eleven.
Eleven, ordinance consenting to disposal of certain real property by the Water Works and Sanitary Sewer Board referred to as abandoned well site fifty-one.
Motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend rules.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous. The ordinance is adopted. Item twelve, ordinance granting authority to Virge Rides, Inc. to construct, install, and maintain shared mobility device stations.
Motion to suspend rules on twelve.
Motion to suspend rules.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
Nick.
I think we got.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
All those people.
Mr. Genright, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
We had people, they're all the ones already talking to us. They're just people with the, yeah, that's good, good, okay.
Item thirteen, resolution of joint city-county to amend the waste disposal allocation in phase one of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative.
They do, they do a motion to suspend.
Oh, it's not a public key?
Just, no more thing. Yeah, thirteen.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Who is it?
Thirteen.
Thirteen's already been passed. Thirteen, okay, thirteen, yeah, okay. All right, motion to suspend rules. If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Resolution is adopted. Item fourteen, resolution authorizing the city of Montgomery to hold fifty percent of the proposed ADECA, proposed budget to match land and water conservation fund assistance.
All right.
Motion.
Need motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend rules.
If I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Calhoun?
Oh, yes, I'm, you changed your mind? You good? Okay.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Okay.
Item fifteen, resolution authorizing the city of Montgomery to hold up to twenty percent proposed project cost for the purpose of matching raise grant.
Ms. Blaylock, Mr. President, can we carry this one over?
Can this over?
Yes.
Okay.
Will we go get the plan Friday, the new, we will get the plan Friday?
Yes, yes, my question, my answer to your question about this necessarily, yes, I will.
Okay. I ain't got any questions.
Okay, so fifteen is carried over to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, yes, ma'am.
Item sixteen, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business at Sushi Cafe at three thousand Ford Zalder Road.
They were going to speak anyway, at some point here. Let me ask you on these trails, are you going to speak tonight or are you going to carry over? Okay, I got, I got some things I want you to give to the council. Would you please take this?
On fifteen, I can't start the application until I know that we have an allocation for match.
Okay.
And that the grant is due February twenty.
On fifteen, we got back.
Go back.
Okay, now, these resolutions are not authorizing the mayor to make application and for it to be executed.
Oh, we need a resolution for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
The council has to authorize to make application, and it's not in these resolutions. When I brought it to her attention, she said she would be bringing another resolution.
So we'll wait till we get the resolution in.
I need the resolution for match in order to write the grant, and once the grant is written, then you get the resolution to apply.
She said we, she said we can't do the grant until you have a resolution authorizing.
She's saying she's going to come back. This lets her make application, but she won't send the application until she comes back.
So you'll be good when we vote on it on the next meeting?
We have to have a match allocated, so this is for match in order to proceed with the application. If we do not, if we haven't had match secured, then there's no reason to apply.
But you can't apply to after you bring it back for approval anyway.
Right.
So if we approve this, that same.
I still have to come back for it. It's a different resolution to apply.
Right, but we can, we can vote on them at the same time.
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Why we can't? Because she ain't going to do nothing but fill out a application sheet.
It's not a, it's not just, it's not like a job application. It's fifteen, at least fifteen pages worth of application, but if I can't secure match, then there's no application. You have to have the match secured.
Match has to be upfront, first thing.
But she can't, I'm confused.
Reality, you gotta have.
So as a part of the application, you have to have money set aside to say that you can apply. So if you don't have the match, there's no reason to write an application.
So you gotta give them a match.
Do I know that? I don't know that the match is.
Well, now, because we did ask for a plan and different stuff, so we haven't gotten it, so all of those things need to be given to.
But we still have to secure the match. The match didn't change.
Okay, that's fine. Well, before we matched, we wanted to be able to secure that. We would get a plan and that different stuff, so that's.
It's not just trails. It's an infrastructure, total infrastructure. So previously, when we applied for reconnecting communities, it's for planning for infrastructure in West Montgomery and North Montgomery. It's not just trails. Trails, we're using trails as a way to receive match because you've already allocated money to trails.
So you're planning, well, okay, so you said you got a infrastructure plan for West Montgomery. What?
This is, it was to apply for an infrastructure plan for Western of North Montgomery, so currently.
I haven't heard none about it.
So currently, it was a grant to apply to get a plan. Currently, you do not have one.
Okay, okay, that's fine. We got you. We got you.
In order to proceed with the rest of the funds, federal funds, you have to have match set aside, and you cannot apply for these federal funds without a plan. You do not have a plan.
Calbre, what if, what if the county don't come through with their hat?
They don't come through, they don't, we don't get the grant, or we have to apply for a smaller amount, but ultimately, we have no funding, aside from about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the grants department, but that's for all grants across the board. But we have infrastructure grants that are available and are available faster than previously. So before, the raise grant would be a grant that wouldn't come forth until the summer. It's coming forth now because of the omnibus.
Is this a rolling grant, Calbre?
It's not.
We, and, and I think the problem is, is the understanding of what the infrastructure means.
So.
Is it thought of as trails?
Because they're, no, so that's what I, okay, so trail, that's why I said it's transportation. You can lump in trails, you can lump in highway, interstate, public transportation, all these into transportation infrastructure projects. As of right now, we do not have a plan. We have to apply for a plan. That's what we did reconnecting communities for. There, we have to do community engagement. So in these processes, we have to go out to the community, ask the community what they want. We have to have plans. We have to have preliminary engineering reports. These are things that we do not have. We are applying to get these things. Once we get the plans that we need, we can proceed with other infrastructure grants. So we're looking at about over half a billion dollars in grant funds that the city of Montgomery will be eligible for just this year alone.
Okay. You just, you need to, need the money upfront to be able to go for a follow.
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, where we at, Madam Clerk? Fifteen?
Need to reconsider fifteen?
Fifteen, I've got that it's carried over to the next meeting. Is that consensus of the council?
Okay, it's carried over.
Okay.
Fifteen's carried over.
Mr. President, but I think everybody, we voted on a carryover, so we was in a majority. We can reconsider the carryover.
Yes, sir, you can.
Yeah.
Oh, she okay with?
It's totally.
I don't hear that happening.
I think, this is my reasoning why. I think if you're against it, just vote against it. Don't hold it up when she comes here and tells us what she need in order to operate. Whatever, whatever the issues may be, that's what we pay her to do.
But, okay, but.
Can I finish?
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you. So we got our experts coming here telling us what we need. As the leadership, we need to give them what they need. Now, they got to bring it back. She got to bring it back to us if we voted. We shouldn't hold her hostage on applying for a grant. That's going to be the fifty.
She can't apply until we do a resolution for her to apply. Didn't we just not say that?
Then she just say she going to bring it back while she's applying.
Okay, so whether we do this today or that day.
I think we letting personal things get involved, but we need to do from a elected body and legislative branch, our experts are asking us to do something. We sit here and we call, we don't understand and say, no, this is not what we going to do.
But then we ask them also to bring us the master plan that we gave them the money for, and we ain't got that. It is. It's the same. It's the trails money. That is what we, she said to us, this is the same money you allocated for trails. Is that not what she said? Is that not what she said? It's the same money we allocated for trails? Is that not what she said, it's the same money we allocated for trails? It, now, if it's a different amount of money or a different set of money, show me that.
It's not, it's through trails, because trails is considered transportation, we're doing overall transportation infrastructure.
But it's the same money we allocated for trails?
Yes.
Okay. We asked for, we asked him, we told him as soon as you bring...
But it's not from the, it's not a part of the trails plan solely. This is a way for you to provide match, this is for match funding.
So the match is the hold, it's just the security saying that the city that we supported...
We did it under trails because our, we qualify, do they qualify for new records?
Yeah, ma'am, our entire city qualifies for that, especially the north and the west side. And she's running for the north and the west side, so, uh, he's like blunt just got in the trails.
Y'all stop selling that, don't sell that, nah.
Okay, the north side, don't worry about the west side, north side.
That's fine.
Stop saying it, because you ain't doing none in the west side.
Because you're holding up the match, that's why, so do you want to proceed?
Hold on, every time I turn around and I'm talking, every time I turn around, you said you going to do a study, you going to engage a community? You said that when you first got in, you engaged nobody yet.
First of all.
Nobody yet, I'm talking, I'm talking, hold on a second.
President, there's a question on the floor.
Okay.
The question is to reconsider that motion, Ms. Blaylock.
Reconsider item fifteen. Have most reconsider, all favor.
Six, at least one, two. Mrs. Graham voting no. That's three, so the motion to reconsider passes, now you've got to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All favor raise your hand.
Six. Six yeses, three no's, so it's carried over.
Carried over, okay.
Hey, Mr. President, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record of why, why that was voted, so when we lose, fell in front, or as we try to move Montgomery forward. So I want it on the record, I didn't want it as though we can agree in a consensus, I just wanted that on the record. So as we move forward, with the leadership and the people that we pay in this city, we always go against them, but we hold them accountable.
They got a lot, they got a lot gun, gun tonight, so, it's good, let's go next, next item?
Sixteen, application for a restaurant retail liquor license doing business at Sushi Cafe, 3,000 and Ford Zelber Road.
Representative Sushi Cafe, please, come forward, Sushi Cafe. Yes, sir, go ahead. Your name, sir?
Yes, Hongbei.
Okay, next back, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak on this item, speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, it's a public hearing, it's been held, it's talked before the council, any motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have most suspend rules, all favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to approve?
Need a motion to adopt? All favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Get up with the business, sir.
Item seventeen, application for a lounge retail liquor class two, class one license by range 231, 3250 We Town Corrode.
Representative Range 231, they already, they, they still here? Yeah, they're here, okay. Come forward, please. Got your back, okay, now your names to the record, please?
Brian Ainsworth.
Okay.
Robbie Scarpense.
Robert, okay, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward this time. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held, it's talked before the council?
Just a couple, a couple questions, well, there, there's been, there was some concerns from the sheriff and, and, uh, the county commissioner for that area out there. They've had complaints about fifteen residences out there, the prior ownership and how they ran things, um... I'm good with do- doing the, the, the retail liquor license, just, we'd like to, I may need to have y'all come back and kind of give us an update on how y'all are operating the place, because we can't continue to have the same issues that the other one had, so.
Okay, need a mo- need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules?
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
And MPD needs to know that they will work this, not the county sheriff's department. Item eighteen, resolution reappointing Liston Edmonds to the Industrial Development Board.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Rest of the agenda? All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt from item?
Motion to suspend the rules, rest of the agenda?
I just had that, I got that, we already voted on that, okay?
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item nineteen, resolution appointing Elizabeth Brown to the Architectural Review Board.
Move to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty, resolution reappointing Sharon Ross to the Board of Trustees Montgomery City County Public Library.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty-one, resolution reappointing Chikinya, Chikinya Calhoun to the Board of Trustees Montgomery City County Public Library.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Are you holding, Mr. Calhoun?
I'm going to say.
Eight, with one abstention.
Okay.
Item twenty-two, resolution concurring in the appointment of Marilyn Coulson to the Board of Directors of Human Resources.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty-three, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various lots.
Need a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty-four, pursuant to section 1153V1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Need a motion to...
Motion to oppose.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item twenty-five, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public necessities on various lots.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolutions are adopted.
All right, what else you got on your desk, Madam Clerk, you got a industrial development board?
I have for, um, Mr. McInnes, a resolution reappointing Leslie Sanders to the Industrial Development Board.
Need a motion to suspend the rules on this item?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
What you got next?
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution contributing $500,000 in joint collaboration with the county commission out of ARPA funds for a total of $1 million for United Way for the Flatwood Community only.
Do you want to carry it over, carry this, do you want to carry this over, just on?
Hey, Mr. President, real quick, and I know, um, do we want to have, uh, Ms. Bailey here next week to answer any questions?
She's here.
Ms. Janice here.
Well, we can have it when we're going to vote on it, just so, if you guys know, or she can do it tonight, whatever you want to do.
I think that we all know Janice, she's per, she wants to see this happen, so.
Do you have any questions, Marsha?
I don't have any questions, I think everybody is kind of...
I think everybody understands the situation, I think it's just a, parameters of the whole deal, anyway, that's fine, okay. Anybody want a question? We'll carry this over to the next meeting, okay?
Okay, and council, I have put in front of you contingency funds, I have...
Contingency funds?
Yes, sir, I have two that have been approved by Mayor Reed. District three, $300 to Pilgrim Rest Missionary Baptist Church. District five, $1,500 to MPS for Linear High School. $1,000 to MPS for Rubaker Magnet School for the golf team. Mayor Reed, I have, uh, received additional allocation, request for allocations, this one is from Councilor Graham. $250 to the historical Mobile Heights and for, there's several neighborhood associations, there's 500 to each of those. Westcott, Memorial Heights, Westgate, Westwood, Carver Park, Westview Gardens, Greater Washington Park, South Lawn, Twin Gates, Danley Pines, Woodcrest, Rubaker Heights, Bouvoir Gardens, Hunter Station, Western Hills, Homeview, and Richard Crest, Southern Meadows. And I have one additional for, uh, Councilor Mitchell. With, uh, $1,500 to West Alabama Jubilee Committee, Community Association. Seth, $300 to Seth Johnson Neighborhood Association, and $500 to Man Hook Inc., Manhood Inc., and they're all vendors.
I got, Ms. Blaylock, Ms. Blaylock, I got one, twenty...
Just a second, let me get... Okay, for district one?
$2,400 to Makoah.
I, how much?
$2,400 to Makoah, and $1,000 to the gentleman that does the sale mo- for Montgomery Ride, whatever, I, I don't know the name of this group. The bike guy that's been doing it for six years, I don't... Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, yes, no, uh...
Just a second, I need to know who the vendors is.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking it up now.
Virgil?
Yeah. Is it the 31 mile? Virgil, say, what's the name of this organization?
They do a good job.
Hey, y'all go ahead and ask, I thought I had it in my phone.
Ms. Blaylock, can you write this down, uh, for district seven, $1,000 to Hilltop Howlers?
To Hill, Hilltop?
Hilltop Howlers, Bob Magoo, for the police, and $1,500 to Linear High School, where Cece's money's going.
Okay. Cece, have you found that yet?
He calling them now.
I texted him. I have, I have a couple more I need to add, Ms. Blaylock.
Okay.
Uh, $1,500 for Youth and Action. Uh, $1,700 Self-Johnson Association. $1,500 to West Alph...
Slow down.
Slow it down.
Okay.
Um, $1,500 to Leadership Montgomery. And, uh, $1,500 to West Alabama Jubilee.
West Alabama.
I think that's the one Mr. Mitchell did, West Alabama Jubilee Association.
West Alabama Jubilee Community Association.
Anybody else?
Yes, uh, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir.
District two, I'd like to, uh, $5,000 to, uh, Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And, uh, $10,000 to Makoah.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm told that the, uh, bike ride is civil rights race series, civil rights race series.
Okay.
Does he stand up as a vendor?
They're not on my list.
I'm pretty sure, I donated last year, Brenda.
Is that him?
It might be under something else, because I donated to them last year.
Civil rights race series?
Civil rights race...
Race series.
Series. It is not on my list, so we'll have to double check it out.
They might need to renew.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Blaylock, I want to, um, district four. Let, let, uh, $500 to Makoah.
Okay.
Um, let me do, uh, $250 to West Alabama Jubilee Communication Association.
Okay.
The one on Run Day Head.
Okay.
And then $500 to the Touch of Love, uh, Ministry's Theological Institute, I think the way the lady that was on this agenda.
Okay, now, they're not on my list, so...
They are.
They are on the list, okay.
And that's it.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor, you okay with these? Okay, ready for vote, Mr.?
Okay, I need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
All favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay, we have, uh, anything else on your?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Uh, Martin Mohammed, Community Patrol, Martin Mohammed.
No, he called and canceled.
He canceled, okay.
And Mr. Robinson called and canceled.
Okay. Harlow Colwell.